Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, March 3rd, 2021. We have a roll call, please.
Bow?
Here.
Garrity?
Here.
Nordentoff?
Here.
Path?
Here.
Pasak?
Here.
Riley?
Here.
And Sula?
Present. We're all here. That's great. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first items on the agenda are approval of minutes from meetings that were held. The first one was held on February 3rd. Does anybody have any questions, comments? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Path, second by Mr. Pasak. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is for the meeting that was held on February 17th. Any questions or comments? If not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Mr. Pasak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Path. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a, excuse me, a final plat of subdivision. It's called the Grand Avenue subdivision.
Yep. Larry Powers of CRD Gurnee LLC, on behalf of Northwestern Medicine, is seeking the re-subdivision of the parcels containing the Northwestern Medical Office Building and the parking field located west of the building from the rest of the Holiday Inn property. This plat provides all of the necessary easement dedication for public utilities and infrastructure. A reciprocal easement agreement also provides for cross-access, cross-parking, and newly-created off-premise signage. All public improvements associated with the new Northwestern Medical Office Building were installed with the development of the new structure. Staff has reviewed the subdivision and verified that it conforms to the village ordinances, and engineering staff recommends that the planning and zoning board forward a favorable recommendation to the village board for the re-subdivision. And that petitioner was unable to be in attendance today.
So there's nobody here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. This is consistent with other, we've seen this kind of thing happen before, so, and I'm pretty sure it came up at the public hearings as well, they intended to do this. So does anybody have any questions or comments? If not, a recommendation to the village board would be in order? Mr. Nordtoff?
Yeah, I move the way forward a favorable recommendation to the village board, that it's in substantial conformance with all the original plans.
Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Riley. I think I heard her first. Roll call, please.
Bow?
Aye.
Garrity?
Aye.
Nordentoff?
Aye.
Path?
Aye.
Pasak?
Aye.
Riley?
Aye.
And Sula?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing variation for property located at 756 Cohasset Court. Clara?
Yep. Jacob and Dana Dombrowski own 756 Cohasset Court and purchased the vacant lot immediately south of their property. They consolidated their two lots and plan to install an in-ground pool to the south of their existing home. By consolidating their lots, the front yard, which is the shorter frontage on a corner lot per code, would now be located to the south along Eastwood Avenue. Pools are not allowed in front yards, so the Dombrowskis are seeking a variation to allow the establishment of the front lot line on a corner lot to be the lot line having the longer frontage on a street. The house is already built in conformance with this orientation, and the applicant is here to present their plans.
Okay, thank you. Something, I don't know if you were moving it, but something's happening with your microphone.
Oh.
Is this is a public hearing? If anyone from the petitioner or members of the general public intend to give testimony, ask questions, or make comments, if you could please stand to be sworn in by the village attorney?
So if the petitioner would raise a right hand, anybody else that might testify, you sort of tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Thank you.
Okay, this time I'll turn the floor over to you. If you could please use the microphone in the center of the room there.
I mean, so I think that Claire described what we're asking for. So we have filed a motion to consolidate our two lots, and then with the two lots consolidating, the front yard would be changed from our current front yard, our front of the house where it's Cohasset, to Eastwood. And then thereby, where we'd like to build a pool, it will be in the front yard. So we're looking to maintain the existing front yard.
Okay. Turn it over to members of the Plan Commission or Planning and Zoning Board.
I just say that makes sense to me. The house is already facing that particular direction, so I don't see any issues with it. It is okay to build a pool in the side yard, I take it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Brad?
I disagree. I mean, I don't know how they meet the standards of variance, because it's a self-imposed hardship.
Okay. Josh?
I'm sort of, I mean, I read the package that you provided, and, you know, all your neighbors seem to be okay with it.
Absolutely.
I see it as sort of a side lot versus a front. I think it's a technicality, but I would agree, it is a self-imposed hardship, but I still think it would fit in with the area itself. I don't see it as sort of not fitting in with that neighborhood. The one thing that gets me, though, is, you know, I know the fence was chosen already, and I don't know if that's a, is it one of those see-through fences? There's a metal?
Correct.
Okay, so that would be my only sort of hang-up, but I don't think that we're privy to that. That's not what we're getting into with this, with this motion, just because it would, it would be the see-through metal fence, and it wouldn't, you know, kind of shield the view, because I think that's the intention of our ordinance, is to keep pools behind homes or on the side versus right in the front. So that would be my only hang-up, but I don't, I don't know if that's, we're privy to making a decision based on the fence.
And we're happy to take that into consideration for the fence. That's not an issue.
Laura?
That was my only question, is that the, is the pool just going to be fenced in, or is the lot?
It is just the pool area, and even the fence is within the setback of where the house would be built. So it's very far away from the, it's within the setback, I should say.
Yeah.
Dave?
Yeah, I guess at face value, it just seems to me like it doesn't make sense to logically move forward and look at this and say, yeah, it makes perfect sense to make that south property now, the new front yard, when the house was already oriented and addressed to the east. And so even if you take the pool equation out of it, and look at it and say, okay, well, we're going to maintain the south properties, the front yard, and they wanted to fence the yard and protect their property and protect, you know, let's say they have a new pet or something like that, with the south property being technically the front, they wouldn't be unable to fence that property, right? So they'd have to come off the south wall. So the front yard today would be the new side yard, so we'd have to fence the side yard right along Cohasset, which wouldn't make any sense to do, you know. So just from a logical standpoint, it just seems like this, this doesn't make sense. And if you take a step back even further, you say, okay, well, what if this came to us before this house was built and it consolidated these two lots? You know, logically, would we, would we say, yeah, this is a good plan, and go ahead and build the house this way or whatever? No, I think we probably could agree with ourselves that we probably wouldn't accept that as a village and say, yeah, well, that makes sense, and that's a good idea. We would say, come back with a different plan. But this is what's there today, and I think for them to be able to utilize the properly, the property properly, I think that this is probably still a reasonable request. Okay. Tim?
I don't have much more to add than what's already been said. I'm torn on it, or no pun intended, literally, on the fence, because, you know, I think that private property holders do have rights, but I agree with a lot of what has been said so far. So, difficult decision.
I'm personally struggling with it as well. I actually, in my mind, I was using a created hardship phrase when I was mulling it over on my own, and I agree 100% with what Dave said in terms of if the lot was, if the as-configurated lot was originally plotted that way, it wouldn't have been developed with the house where it is. So it's, it's kind of an odd situation. I'm struggling to get behind it. This is a public hearing, so as a matter of procedure, I need to open the floor to the public, but I don't sense that there's anybody here, aside from Mr. Dombrowski, that is intending to make comments. So I'm going to open the floor, but I'm going to close it to the floor, close the floor to the public and go back to the commissioners to further deliberate. Any additional thoughts or comments?
The one thing about the fence, if this house was on the corner or facing the other direction, the pool would still be visible, even if it was in the backyard from their street that they're on now, Cohasset? Is that what it's called? Yeah, it would be visible from there anyway. I don't see a big issue with it. I mean, if the neighbors don't care, whoever moves in is already going to know that it's, it's set up like this. They have the choice whether to move in or not, so personally, I just don't have a problem with it.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Do we have any other examples of this sort of layout being approved within the village, all of our 30,000-plus residents? I know there's less homes, but any examples?
So, we do have some properties that I polled that, they may not be the exact same situation, but they were granted a switch in what would be considered the front yard. One was on University Avenue and one was on Bell Plain, both kind of in the older part of town. And they were also situations where the front yard was chosen based on the length.
Can I ask what year? Do we know?
They were in the 90s, so it has been a while since we, that I could find that we've approved one like that.
And I'm trying to remember, I think I recall that coming up. Is that the odd situation where there's, like, a street runs both in front of and behind, immediately adjacent to the property?
One of those was like that, but then one was similar to this, where it was a corner lot.
Okay.
The former zoning code had a provision to switch the front and corner side yard without going through a variance process. So it was a relief that was able to be granted just through the text of the zoning code. The new zoning code did not allow for that, so the, did not allow for that other process. So the current zoning code, the only way to grant that relief is to do it via a variance.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Dave. Brian, any additional thoughts?
You know, I'm going to stand with my initial comment, and this just doesn't meet the standards for a variance. I mean, if we look at the standards that are in our little pink placard here, I mean, not only does it not meet standard number two, I don't think it meets standard number four. I mean, this is just, and as to whether the surrounding property owners think this is appropriate or not, that's not their decision to make. You know, that's, you know, our, you know, commission is to maintain the integrity of the village's zoning ordinance, not surrounding neighbors and property owners. So I'm voting no.
Okay. Thank you. Josh, any additional comments?
Can you explain how it doesn't meet two and four? Just, just wanted to get some more details on your opinion on that, because that'd be my one feedback and question. But also, I think, you know, the neighbors, and this was a public hearing, and they've spoken on paper by signing, you know, the petitioner's package. So I would say their voice has sort of been heard, and that would be some sort of support to grant the variance.
I have a question.
I think, let's just close the loop.
Just curious, I just, how doesn't it meet?
Well, number two, I mean, the second clause there has not been created by the owner. Well, clearly, this has been created by the owner. He purchased the lot, knowing that he couldn't build this here.
That's actually-
That's a self-imposed hardship right there.
Yes, yes, sir.
I was not aware that this, this was going to happen. I was not aware that by consolidating these lots, that my front yard, my side yard was going to turn into my front yard. So this, I was completely unaware of the ordinance.
And even, I guess I will, I will take the position that even if you're now, if you had no knowledge of this, it's still nonetheless, your actions created this hardship.
Well-
And as far as number four, I mean, just read it. "Particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the specific property imposes a particular hardship upon the owner is distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be to carry out." Okay, well, there's no particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of this property. I mean, it's a flat, square lot. So-
Well, you can, but I would say this, you can consider the fact that the house currently has the orientation to Cohasset, and, you know, that, that's significant in that it is a condition that exists, that, you know, the owner is saying, you know, that's not a hardship that, you know, that he created, because he didn't, you know, that was the orientation at that time. And again, I think what Mr. Ziegler said is to remember, this is a rather unique variation in the sense that prior to the most recent zoning code amendment, this was something that could, could have been done administratively.
It was not administratively, and Tracy corrected me. It actually was a variance process in the old code.
Oh, it was.
It was a variance process in the old code as well, yes.
Oh, okay. So each commissioner can make, you know, that's your job, is to make the decision on that after the discussion you've had.
First of all, I'd just say, I don't understand why the house has to face a particular street because of the length of the property or the width. I don't get that to begin with. I've seen properties that-
Yeah, it doesn't have to. It's just what the zoning ordinance, like, classifies as the front lot line-
Right.
-for purposes of what is allowed in the front yard, the rear yard.
So if there was a house on that corner lot, and it was over to the left of that property, somebody could build a pool in their side, side yard, correct, on the corner of the street? The other street that we're talking about being the front of the property, if their house was on the left side of the property, if they had room, they could build a pool on the corner?
Well-
In their side yard.
Theoretically, the house would be facing, theoretically, the lot was, the front yard was, was Eastwood before, on the vacant lot.
Could you point for what you're talking about, Mr. Path?
Yeah, I don't know what number that property is, but the property that's vacant right now that he purchased.
Which is right up here?
Yeah, I guess, I guess if you, I guess because of the shape of that property, the front yard would still have to be Cohasset.
No.
It wouldn't?
No, I don't think so.
I believe so. I mean, if this lot was still like its own separate lot, the front would be Cohasset, and that looks like that's-
The vacant lot, Tracy?
I don't have the dimensions in front.
Well, it looks to me like the dimensions are similar to his, so I answered, I figured it out myself, but-
I have a question. So if the petitioner, I mean, if what we're saying here is that the front yard actually becomes off of, what is it, Eastwood?
The front yard becomes Eastwood.
Right.
Because it's a-
Could the petitioner, if he wanted to, do a cut through and put a driveway all the way through that lot up to his house? Because that's the front lot.
Yes.
But then he can't put a pool in his front yard. That's the problem.
I know, I'm just, I'm trying to think logic. Right, he couldn't have a pool, but he could have a driveway.
We would never have bought that lot next to us if we didn't have the ability to improve upon it at some point in the future.
Okay. Any other additional reflections? I mean, I-
Yeah, I mean, the way it stands right now, a house could be built there, and they want to change the orientation, so instead of a house, a pool could be there. So that is one way of looking at it in terms of assessing this.
You're saying that they could separate the lot and just build a pool?
No, they could separate the lot and build a house.
House could have a pool.
Well, yes, well, I mean, it gets kind of tight at that point, but yeah. So in terms of, you know, again, I know there's, you know, look at the totality of the situations, because basically, you know, under the current ownership and what the intent has been expressed here, I mean, you know, you can certainly consider that as part of your deliberations.
Just quickly, I think they look bigger than that. So, this is the corner lot?
Yep.
If this was its own lot still and not combined with Lot 2, the front would be off Cohasset still, because it's a shorter dimension, it's the longer corner side. So I think what you were asking is, yes, a house could be built here, and a pool could be built to the rear of that. It would still be to this side of it, but it would be out of the corner side setback, which is 25 feet.
Well, if their house was narrow and it was facing Cohasset, they could put a pool on the corner in their side yard, correct?
Say that again, if their house was facing-
Which-
If their house was facing Cohasset.
Which is why I just said yes.
Right, and their house was on the right side of the property, they could put a pool on the corner. No, on the side.
Off the south Eastwood, as long as it's not, yeah.
It has to be outside of that corner side setback.
Right.
Right, yeah. Anywhere in that rear yard, they could put a pool outside of that corner side setback. It has to, the pool has to maintain a template setback for that rear property.
Right.
I get the self-imposed argument, I do, but I still think I go back to what you said, Mr. Nordtoff. You know, you can build a pool on the side of your house. That's, that's kind of what is taking place. I think it's a technicality in terms of what becomes the front versus the side of the house. I stand, I think, I don't see it that, being that big of a deal.
And see, when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it, we're taking a situation that was developed under good planning criteria, and we're turning it into something that wouldn't, it wouldn't have been planned that way.
Exactly.
So, that's, that's, that's what I'm struggling with.
I get it.
Okay. Tim, anything else?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm sitting here still struggling with it.
Dave, anything else?
I have nothing else, Dave.
Laura?
No.
It's, this is a tough one. I mean, it's, there's just not a clear, right answer here.
And everybody has a, you know, intent of the ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to not allow swimming pools in the front yard. When you say in the front yard, it's a traditional front yard. This is kind of a unique application of that standard, but, you know, that, if you take a step farther back and look at the intent of the actual ordinance, you don't want the house and then a pool sitting in the front yard between the house and the street, so that's-
And I could make an argument that it's, even if we change the front yard to be Cohasset instead of Eastwood, the pool is still going to be in the front yard.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah.
It's in the corner side at that point, or the, but yes, yes.
Is it in the front yard?
It'd be in the corner side yard.
I think it's in the side.
No, I know, but if we were, I guess my question is-
But it's facing the front.
If I'm sitting on-
Just asking for semantics.
If I'm sitting on Cohasset and I'm looking at the property from Cohasset, looking, what would it be, west? Is it, the pool going to be in the middle, the front, the back?
You see, it's in the middle back. It's in this particular, it's on the left.
See, it's not going to be behind anything. That's, and that's very atypical.
But it would be behind the plane of the front of the house.
Same orientation as the plat.
What's that?
So it sets back behind the front plane of the house, which would be our standard for a corner, for it being located inside.
Do we have the, this is a recommendation, right?
This is a recommendation to the village board, so is anybody willing to advance a motion?
I just have one, I-
Sure.
Thank you. So in the staff memo, it indicates that the consolidation of the two lots has already occurred. I mean, so did a plat of consolidation, has that been approved? I mean, wouldn't that have come before us?
There's an adminis-
I don't reckon of this.
Yeah, there's an administrative procedure to do a partial plat of vacation for combining two lots. The village board has authorized that as an administrative task. So two legally-
Vacation.
Pardon?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
So the village board has authorized an administrative process to do a partial plat of vacation to eliminate a common lot line, to take two lots and consolidate them into one.
So it's not vacating and easement, it's vacating a lot line?
Okay, okay.
Wow, I've been doing this for 35 years. That's the first time I've ever heard that.
Okay. I've, no, I've heard of it, and, I mean, I'm not the author of it for this village, but that happens, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, along with various plat act exceptions, so, I mean, it does happen.
Yeah, okay.
And not only in Gurnee, other communities as well.
And, and not related to this particular topic, but Dave and I have talked about these logistics before, so I, I wasn't totally surprised that it could be done administratively, so.
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Go ahead, Tim.
Motion to afford a favorable recommendation on the petition of Jacob and Dana Dombrowski for a variation to allow establishment of the front line on a corner lot to be the lot line having the longer frontage on a street on property located at 756 Cohasset Court in Gurnee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Garrity, second by Mr. Pasak. Any discussion on the motion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Yep. Bow?
No.
Garrity?
No.
Nordentoff?
Aye.
Path?
Aye.
Pasak?
Aye.
Sula? Sorry, Riley?
Aye.
And Sula?
No. So the motion carried four to three, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So as you may or may not know, we are a recommending body to the village board, and Clara or someone from staff will let you know when the village board will take up the matter and make their final decision. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next item on the agenda is an informal review. My pen just fell apart. I think everybody's remember, remembers what the concept of the informal review is. It's one of my favorite things in the zoning ordinance. It gives people an opportunity to brainstorm and provide collective wisdom. And as the petitioner, I'm sure, has been, or potential petitioner, I should say, has probably been told, I mean, anything that we say here is kind of just our, you know, here and now input, but not necessarily, flat out isn't, any guarantee that we'll see it the same way in the future. So at this point in time, I'll turn the floor over to the representatives from Bridge, and if whoever's talking can use the microphone in the center of the room, please.
So I'm Nick Siegel with Bridge Development Partners. I run the Chicago region. I'm a partner, partner at Bridge. So thank you, everybody, for getting together tonight. I appreciate it. With me, I got Mark Hauser as well. Mark runs our construction and entitlements for Chicago. So this is, I think, you know, I'm sure everyone's kind of aware of this site and where it is. Before I get into the site itself, I can give a little bit of an intro of kind of who we are. I'm going to put those pages on the very back of the presentation. David, sorry about that. I was thinking about that earlier. So Bridge is an industrial developer. We're the most active developer in Chicago. We've done about nine million square feet of industrial product in the last 10 years. We've been the most active developer in Lake County as well. We have a 225-acre business campus in Waukegan that is basically fully leased. And this site was really, really exciting to us, because we kind of view it as an extension of our success in Lake County, which has been a lot of higher, higher image corporate tenants. So we are under contract on the entire 40-acre piece here that you see, kind of the triangle surround- surrounded by Milwaukee and Washington Avenue. What we would like to do is build two industrial buildings. We've talked to, you know, a number of people and understand this obviously is not part of a comprehensive plan in this location. I know there is some desire for some industrial in the town, but this may not be the included in part of the plan. We think these buildings would be a great fit here, we think we can provide a lot of value, you know, significant increased tax revenue, a lot of that going to the schools, nearly a million dollars a year going directly to the schools in the town of Gurnee, minimal traffic, traffic impact. We have kind of preliminarily carved off a retail outlot of about four acres, done some market research, speaking with brokers we work with, trying to get that size right. Frankly, I don't think retail's that viable of an option here, but I think there's going to be some desire for it, so we carved that off. And like you said, informal workshop, we're kind of here to get your thoughts, got pictures, rendering, site plan, all that stuff, so I think just looking forward to kind of hopefully working together here. So I think, you know, Dave, if you go up to the next, the previous page, try page three for a second, or, sorry, page five, you just keep scrolling. So this is a better site plan, it's two industrial buildings with a shared truck court. Because of the shared truck court configuration, you don't see a lot of trailers from the street or from Milwaukee Avenue. What we've found in Lake County is most of our users actually don't have a lot of 53-footers. It's a little bit more office finish, more corporate-type users, so we think the truck traffic is going to be minimal. Retail lot, obviously on that corner, would love to buy the gas station as well, he does not want to sell, so I think we're going to have to plan around that. Detention on the south, I know that we are eating into some of the trees that we're going to need to preserve, so I think our final plan would likely move some of that detention further west and keep some of those trees and/or mitigate them. If you go to the next slide, I got 28 pages, so please interrupt me before I get all the way through them. Did a perspective rendering, I think you can kind of see these, you know, these aren't your grandfather's industrial buildings, higher image, lots of glass. Obviously, the green space would be more landscaping than is shown now. This costs a lot of money to get this rendering done, so I didn't want to go much further than this, but you can kind of see what we're, what we're looking at from the viewpoint. If you go to the next slide, that's the end cap unit, lot of glass, really high image. I think it's a, you know, it's a nice look. If you drove our park in Waukegan, not too far from here off of Buckley Road, I think you'd be happy with the aesthetic that we provide with our buildings. You can go to the next slide. This is our tax analysis, and you can just kind of scroll down, what I would go to, keep going down. I had our tax consultant put this together, and you can kind of keep, keep going further. I think the point that I wanted to get to here, if you go to the next page, is this shows the tax distribution, the left side is what it is currently, and the right side is what we project it's going to be with our taxes stabilized. Total tax bill here is probably north of a million and a half dollars annually. When you break that out to where it goes, the Gurnee School District is looking at $550,000 annually, up from $37,000 on the property right now, and the Warren Township Schools get in about $250,000 annually. And I can't read those numbers, so that was off my head. But, you know, we think there's going to be significant revenue from this, and then the other thing that we put together, if you keep kind of scrolling further down, is, and that's just the tax bill, I had, you know, one of the most prominent retail brokers in the market write a letter talking about what he sees for retail uses here. In his opinion, the highest and best use is to buy that gas station on the corner, he does not want to sell. But the highest and best use would be to buy that gas station and build a car wash, oil change, and, you know, modern gas station with a service center here because of the location. The lack of the hard corners really, really tough for retail. You know, the freestanding restaurants obviously aren't doing anything right now. So, you know, what we would end up doing is probably developing a pad and marketing it for sale and, you know, seeing who comes. It could be sometime. We just did this in Itasca, and it took a while, and we ended up getting a gas station and an extended stay hotel. I think the hotel was dumb luck, to be honest with you. And we still have four acres that's going to sit for a while, so he just kind of gave his opinion on, you know, what, what he sees from a retail perspective here. And then the rest of this is just kind of, if you keep going, it's more of just who Bridge is and kind of what we've done locally and nationally. Like I said, we are the largest industrial developer in Chicago. We're, you know, national at this point, we've done a bunch in Lake County. Our CEO is based in Chicago, we love this project, we'd love to kind of find a way to That's kind of all I got, so, yeah, go ahead.
I was just waiting for a lead.
Yeah, yeah.
Who'd like to start? Go ahead.
What kind of, what kind of tenants would you envision in these buildings? Because it looks like it's not going to be one big one, it's going to be multi-units, kind of like what we have in, off the cemetery in Tri-State Parkway, that industrial section we already have?
Yep.
Where they have only child, like the beer, then they have, you know, next to these studios. What would you envision in these?
So everything we do is on a speculative basis, which means we don't come in with a tenant in tow. The way most developers work is you've got to make your money, the capital wants a return, so we've got to get the buildings up, and then the tenants follow, so we take that risk. I think, you know, the only thing I can guarantee you is our track record, right? And I think you can go look at Grand Tri-State and see a similar mix. I just did a lease with Abbott as well, out in Itasca, our park at Waukegan, which I think attracts a similar user base. We've done a lease with BMC and Visual Pack, they're contract packaging companies, they employ a lot of workers, they run three shifts doing, like, they get chewy bars by the pallet load, and then they sort them into like two chocolate chip, two peanut butter, two whatever, and then they give them to the grocery store. Ton of jobs, ton of jobs, lot, not a lot of truck traffic. We've obviously done leases with Amazon, I don't think this is an Amazon location, to be honest, which I think is probably a good thing. We've done leases with Jelly Belly, we've done leases with, trying to think of who else, Medline has taken space from us, we did a lease with Costco, I mean, you know, it kind of runs the board. What I would tell you, we see here is, you know, mid-sized corporate tenants who have probably somewhere between 10% to 15% office finish in their space at the end of the day. But, you know, it's, it's hard to name it in advance.
Just follow up. What does it look like on the inside? Because I see three sets of windows, are those multi-levels? Or is it just one big open space?
Single floor, one big open space. The way the buildings are designed is they're easy to demise, so you can kind of cut them up however the tenants need them to. But what we design is just a big open space and see who fills it.
Okay.
Yeah, Tim?
I mean, is this question time, or can I give feedback as well?
Either or.
Okay, so, I mean, listen, I know what you're saying about not having many trucks, but, I mean, the north building would have 47 dock doors?
Yes.
The south building would have 54 dock doors? You're having over 100 dock doors with trucks potentially coming in all hours. Listen, to me, I don't like it at all. I don't think it meets the character of the village. It's this one-off, I mean, I'm taking a look at this, this big warehouse in the middle of an area that I think that we've had previous discussions of, this is kind of a community character issue. We've talked about having a sports complex. So even with our own vision here that we've talked about, in the planning and zoning board and within the community, we've talked about how important this area is to the future of the village, open space of, you know, what we see this as. And to take it and put two huge warehouses, I don't think it's in character of the, of the village. It's separate, it's one-off from the rest of the industrial warehouses on the west side of the village. I personally couldn't get behind it. So that's my feedback.
Thank you.
Since it's open dialogue, can I just talk a little bit? Can I react? And I want to be respectful, but I have a couple comments, if you don't mind. And I get that, right? And I was prepared for that today, so I'm not, I don't want to come off as defensive, I just want to be honest, right? You know, we, we try to build as high-end of buildings as possible, they're the most expensive buildings in the market because they're brand new. So I think what we end up attracting is really nice, high-image tenants. So I know it is industrial, I know it's not what the village wants at the end of the day, at some level, because I know it's not as part of the comprehensive plan, but we do build these, these really nice buildings to attract corporate users who hopefully don't have a lot of trucks. And I think the one thing that we do provide, or one of the many things that we will provide, is, you know, we'll provide a lot of tax revenue without a lot of drain on the village. I think we are pretty close to the highway, I don't think you're going to have trucks heading east into the village, they're going to kind of head, right, take a right on Milwaukee and get right on the highway. So I think, you know, we are pretty unobtrusive here, and I understand that completely, but I do think, you know, we try to design in mind of knowing that this is, you know, potentially an uphill battle.
And I understand that, I'm not, you know, it's not a personal...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I know that, yeah.
It's something that, I think one of the things that you've not been privy to is the, you know, the comprehensive plan of the village and, you know, the vision of what we've had, this is not in line with what I've seen before. So I turn it back to my fellow commissioners.
I mean, since we've approached the subject of comprehensive plan, I mean, we just adopted a comprehensive plan, what, six months ago? And industrial classification is nowhere near anything in the, in the vision of the comprehensive plan, nor in any of the underlying discussions that we had before we came to the final product of the comprehensive plan. And no matter how you slice it, it's, it's going to be a big warehouse. And, you know, 100 dock doors is not insignificant, and, I mean, it, I just have a very hard, at this conceptual level, I'm just having a hard time being very supportive of this one.
I concur completely with what you just said and what Commissioner Garrity said. I mean, we spent, what, two years reviewing this comprehensive plan before it was actually adopted? And this was never, you know, even thought about for this area. It's just completely out of character with what we're looking for. And as far as this constant reference to tax revenue and things like that, yes, that's one component of, you know, viable development, but that's not the be-all and end-all of good land planning for our community. And this is, I can't, I couldn't support this ever.
Ed?
I agree with everyone so far. I mean, the building looks nice, but it's definitely not what we had envisioned for this area. One thing that I was looking at is there is no easy tollway access from there, and 100 docks and trucks going down 21 and up, well, I don't know where else they'd go to, they'd have to go up to Grand to get onto the tollway, at least going in one direction anyway. So I just don't see this as a good fit for this area.
Laura?
I agree. I think it's just too obtrusive. If it was, you know, off of the Tri-State tollway where we have, the Tri-State Parkway where we have these types of buildings where they're not just kind of in your face, that's fine, but this is, yeah, I just don't think it, it flows with the, what's around it and our plan.
Dave?
You know, it sounds like piling on here, but in my 18 or so years on this body, you know, we were working with an outdated, an outdated plan that we really couldn't use as good guidance, and so we finally, after a lot of heavy lifting, got something that we could use and we can really use, you know, as a barometer and a guide for where we want to see this village go. And so I don't want to be so quick as to just dismiss all that work. You know, this is a unique scenario, too. I mean, we don't have a lot of, you know, 40-acre open parcels that's a nice clean slate to be able to think big, you know. We are more of a, in an infill environment in our village today than we were 20 years ago. So, you know, we want to be, you know, very careful about how we take a look at these parcels and be good stewards of the space because it's at a premium at this point, and we have this brand-new guide. So I don't know that many of us had envisioned of 1,000 feet of, you know, industrial building frontage. As nice as you guys build your property, no offense, but, you know, in that stretch of Washington, you know, I think many of us might have had a little bit of a different vision, me being one of them, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're candid.
Yeah, it is what it is. I mean, I don't, you know, I appreciate, I was absolutely expecting this at some level. I, you know, the one thing I would ask you is what do you envision here? You know, if I can, you know, just as an open dialogue, what, what, what does want to be here?
The comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I mean, the comprehensive plan spells it out pretty well.
Yeah, I mean, frankly, 50% of all restaurants that have closed are never going to reopen. You're not going to be able to put a gas station here, we're not going to be able to do an office, Gurnee Mills is vacant. I, you know, we're trying to, and I don't want to sound frustrated, so, this is what it is. I just would, you know, I, as a developer who's under contract on the site, you know, we'd like to make something work here, I'm just curious, you know, what, for 40 acres, you know, what, what do you want to see in today's environment, where we're wearing masks and, you know, there's not a lot open?
Well, hopefully that doesn't last...
Yeah, I mean, no, yeah, I know. I mean philosophically, I think everybody's, has stated very well in their own way that, you know, we're working off a comprehensive plan that's brand-new and well-thought-through, and I for one am fully appreciative of the dynamics of what's going on in the economy right now, and we've just got off 100-year-old people, and I'm not willing to cast dispersions or throw everything to the wayside when we're still trying to sort through that. I mean, sometimes as Americans, we don't do a very good job of long-term visioning compared to some of the, of the other cultures in the world, and I think this is one where we kind of need to stand our ground and kind of work through the comprehensive plan, so I...
I agree.
Okay.
Chairman?
Yes, yes.
If I may, Glenn Christensen, out of retirement again. I guess I'm somewhat responsible here a little bit because Danny Rydell owns a property, I've been a friend and a client, he's been a client of mine for many years. Danny's just become successful to consolidate all this property. It took him probably 30 years to do that, and he obviously has an interest in this since they are the contract purchasers. Bridge Development, Mark and I go way back, we go back to college, we were roommates. But besides that, and as a Gurnee resident, I think you've got to look at this, the comprehensive plan. I mean, things have changed a lot since you've actually adopted that, too. And I think we've got a situation where this is a plan, it's in the works, there's a lot of work that has to be done yet, design-wise and that. It's a plan in motion, and I think you have to consider that this, they're ready to move in the fall, this will move very quickly. To be honest with you, the vision for the comprehensive plan, I think you could sit for very, very many years and not see anything happen there. I think most people with those type of uses that I worked with through the years, they all want to be on Grand Avenue, they all want to be by the mills, and that type of use would probably better served on Grand Avenue with the redevelopment with the mills in the future. So I just want you to consider the short term here, and I think the tax thing is not a thing to blow off. We have the high school district that's going to referendum, and this is obviously cash cow for them, and it's something that can happen immediately. And if it doesn't happen now, I think the, you know, the Exodus to Wisconsin and everywhere else is going to continue. So I think those are some of the points you have to consider as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. I think I'm pretty much done. Does anybody else have anything else to say? You got our cold and honest feedback, so, I mean, it's, you know, the formal process is still obviously available to you, I mean, nothing is shut out here, but I'm not seeing very much receptivity to what you're proposing here, so. Thank you. Next scheduled meeting on the calendar is St. Patrick's Day. Are we going to have anything?
We don't have any public hearings scheduled, but we could have a non-public hearing item.
Okay. All right. Next is opportunity for public comment. I'm not sensing that there's anyone here from the public, so I'll close the floor on that item. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
It's moved.
Moved by Mr. Bowe, seconded by Mr. Pesak. All of you ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks, everyone, enjoy the more seasonable weather that we've been having.
Yeah.